... the Kataba County Board of Education, regular meeting, April 28th, coming from the bottom. I'm going to do more. If you stand with more than five minutes, and then first one for four. We'll be on the table.
... America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, sir, thanks again. We always look forward to the opportunity to come in off of spring break on a Monday. I'm going to introduce some, I have two juniors on the end that are carrying rifles, and then two seniors in the middle, which probably won't see again. They have pretty big plans ahead of them. So first, Will Harbin, that first sergeant, he's in his junior year, he's been with me all three of these years, he's a very avid fly fisherman. He was also on the day last team, he's going to Washington D.C. But he's got a fly fishing script that he's going to go on, so he's not going to be able to go with himself. So we're taking one of our alternates. He's a first sergeant along with Damon Conde. A couple of things about first sergeants are probably the hardest jobs that you have in terms of experience. So they've done really well this year. And I look forward to having them in the season. Will is kind of deciding, trying to decide if he's going to do something important, because he told me why he had to start. Damon Conde on the other side, other rock, that captain, hasn't prepared yet to start school. Damon is on the day last team, he's going to go to Washington D.C. So I can't wait. I actually talked to Mr. Harrigan, or I'm sorry, Sergeant Harrigan's office today about our eighteen-year team. But Damon, the academy planner, is our first kid. He's at the MAFU, a fire park, as a duty firefighter, and then signed up to take the CTC firefighting program, and then planning to do that after graduation. Next to him is, that captain, Julian Giedlinia. He's probably my flight agent, that that I've got out of the ball. He's been with me all four years. I've never hurt him yet. He's very, very tall and very flexible, very light. He is what I would consider a master woodworker. I should have brought one of these creations with me today, and I was surprised he didn't have it. But he's probably the principal woodworker, and he's also a full, but he's gotten the welding stuff, he's in the welding program, going to do that after graduation, and then transfer to App State and get in your current design, and sort of develop. Last but not least, our next guy, man, is one of his several last trips with Luke Tiddy doing. His next bid will be, you know, every single one of those balls, right, with the top of the truck. Been with me all four years. When he started out, I think he was already right, buck, driven, and now he's home with his two bills. He's in the gym a lot, and I counted him and his buddy, David, he's been in the fall, military sophomore, but by the time they graduated, he'd be able to run two point five, seven, eight, nine, ten, I think they're trying to look at the team, he has when it comes to the gym. But that's where it stops with always, extremely intelligent, near the top of five to six, class. Got accepted to a couple of different universities, but still waiting on lines, it's red, and into the pack. My partner, I do it though, so, um, I did have to get to Eastview in there, up on the year, uh, in the three block. I need to add the background, like you're saying, and sort of, um, hopefully, uh, he waited, he was definitely, I see the way it all went, and it's a little bit late this year, he didn't apply for a four-year other subject. So we'll still, we'll hear back from that, and he's playing two, six, seven, twenty-four options. I'm going to miss you a lot, and I'll have another year to follow. Thanks, sir, for letting me come out to you, and, uh...
It's just a reminder to make sure you cut your mic so that the people online can hear us when we're speaking. And stuff. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the March 24th, 2025, the Cataba County Board of Education meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the minutes from the March 24th, 2025 meeting as presented.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I look for approval by raise hand. And that's unanimous? Uh, the next item on the agenda is adjustment approval of our current agenda.
Chairman, we don't have any recommendations for adjustments for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one adjustment that I'd like to request. I had sent to the board today an email concerning new, our unfinished business item number one, regarding the power school letter to Attorney General Jeff Jackson from the Board of Education. I hope everyone got to look at it. It actually was an email showing that as of February 6th, nearly three months ago, that the Attorney General has taken the action we're requesting in this letter. I think for that reason, our letter's now no longer relevant, it's untimely, no longer needed, looks like we're out of touch if we're requesting something he's already doing. And I'd like to request that we remove that from the agenda for this evening. In fact, I'll state that in the form of a motion that we remove the power school letter.
There's a motion, I'm looking for a second. A second. Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I did not actually see the email that Ms. Barnett had actually sent us about the February 6th, and I'm not sure if everything that was presented as far as, um, Jackson, I just don't know if that was even, if everything was in there as far as what we were requesting in that letter.
Maybe you could take time to look at it if you'd like to, Ms. Tig. It was emailed to all the board members.
I understand, but I did not see that email earlier today.
Would you like to take time, or whenever the chairman would like for you to? I just think for us to send a letter asking for him to open an investigation and a possible lawsuit, when that's what his, uh, what he started doing on February 6th, I think it makes us seem like we're out of the loop on what's happening.
Guarantee that we are not out of the loop on some of these things as far as the power school. There were other counties that actually submitted the same letter, and they actually sent the same letter, or similar letter, after the February 6th date that you're referring to.
But now we're three months out, nearly.
So everything he did that is in the letter does, is mentioned in, is... Basically saying he's investigating power school to determine if they broke any laws in the process. Take additional legal action if necessary. Need to guard our state and data breaches and hold those who properly protect information accountable. We have a motion and a second. We've had a discussion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of removal of unfinished business number one, do have raised hand for approval? That is myself, Clayton, April, and David. Who's not approved, raise hand. Alan Don singing. Next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Approved agenda as adjusted.
I make, I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the amendment, with the removal of new... I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a raise of hand for approval of the adjusted agenda. Next thing on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Settlemyer, members of the board. We're excited tonight to recognize some students here in Cataba County Schools for their incredible artwork and their teachers. We also will be recognizing our employees of the month, so if you'd like to join me out front, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, so Ms. Jordan's coming up to help hand out our art, and, uh, Ms. Jordan and, and Dr. Erwood, who was with us previously, uh, has been a huge help in this process, Mr. Wayland too, in our HR department. Uh, but when we repainted things and, um, uh, started, I don't know if we remodeled, is remodeling painting? Anyhow, uh, this is remodeling for us. We wanted to make it look like a school, like, uh, Cataba County Schools, and so, what better way of doing that than demonstrating some incredible artwork? So, we started the first ever superintendent's artwork, and, um, we had some incredible selections to choose from. And our first winner this year, our elementary school winner, is Athea Yang, fourth grade of Oxford Elementary. Her teacher is Ms. Kimberly Fragola, and the principal is Ms. Jenny Fry.
Yeah. He has a certificate, and then we'll let you go up there and we'll give a picture.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Jordan. We're going to be hanging our artwork up. We stole this idea from several schools, but I see Mr. Hefner standing back there. So I think we really stole it from Maiden High School, but if anyone at the school... Okay, thank you, Ms. Pacer. Uh, we love to steal good ideas. Uh, yeah. That particular piece of art too is, Ms. Fragola, in her class, uses recyclables, uh, just a great demonstration of, of, uh, using recycled items into incredible art. Great job. All right. Our next winner is our middle grades, uh, and this winner comes from Maiden Middle School, Claire Sherfy, eighth grade. Teacher's Ms. Natalie Benari, and our principal's Mrs. Angela Williams. All right. And our high school winner, uh, is Ms. Ella Burke, tenth grade, Maiden High School. Her teacher is Ms. Sherry Pacer, and our principal is Mr. Brian Hefter. Come on up. I have to say again, we have some incredible students with some incredible talent, with some incredible teachers, so thank you all. Well, well done, and we're looking forward to... I'd said nine years ago when I got here, I said, "This place looks like a hospital." And here we are nine years later. We're catching up. We're catching up. All right. Now, to our employees of the month. Uh, really excited to honor our folks. Every month, we have so many folks who get, huh, it's harder and harder every month, but we're thankful for all of our folks getting nominated. This month, our administrator of the month, uh, coming out of Tuttle, pardon me, this is last month, we're catching her up, uh, because she couldn't be here. Let me welcome Chris Geddes to our sponsor. Thank you, Chris, for all you do. Our administrator of the month for the month of March is Connie Abernathy. Come on up. So Ms. Abernathy's been a wonderful teacher for us, a, uh, instructional coach, and now she's at Tuttle Elementary School, uh, doing a great job. Uh, we're thankful to have her in our system, and, uh, as I told her the other day, uh, we always knew she was a great teacher, but now we're learning she's a great administrator. So fantastic, Ms. Abernathy. All right, on to our certified employee of the month, is Ms. Erica Carmichael, second grade teacher from Clyde Campbell Elementary. Is she, yeah, here she is. Okay, come on up. Uh, Ms. Carmichael, uh, I think we discussed the other day, we actually landed here about the same time, uh, but it was so exciting to go to her class. You know you've made the right choice when the kids cheer and holler and thank you for choosing their teacher. Uh, just absolutely wonderful. So Ms. Carmichael, congratulations. Let's give her another round of applause. Oh, yeah. And the last one in March, uh, and then we'll do, uh, catch up here in April. Last one in March is Amber Waters. She's a teacher assistant bus driver from Balls Creek. Uh, Ms. Waters, if you'd like to come on up. Do you want me to tell the stories? Hold on. Uh, we went to go see Ms. Waters at Balls Creek, and we know her kids love her, and we know your staff loves you too. She does, does amazing work with students who are in need, and, uh, we're just thankful for your work. So let's get a picture with these folks. Please give them a round of applause. All right, now we're into April, employees of the month. Uh, this, uh, month, April, our administrator of the month is also an assistant principal. This assistant principal hails originally as a PE teacher, uh, and did a great job as a PE teacher, and, uh, transitioned very nicely into our assistant principal's role, has been doing it several years. But Mr. Robinson, uh, does a great job not only in the school, but has learned from his, uh, mentor, Mrs. Garcia, that, uh, being an administrator at Murray doesn't stop at the doors of Murray. They go into the, the, uh, in, out in the public and get their kids, uh, talk to their parents, just do so many amazing things. I know Mr. Robinson is, is crucial in that part, so, uh, let's give Mr. Ray Robinson a hand, round of applause. We're excited, uh, to have an exceptional children's teacher on our list this month, uh, from Maiden Middle School. Our certified employee of the month is Ms. Sonia Church. Come on up. We went to go see Ms. Church, I'll just tell you real quick, and, um, you know, again, just a no-brainer to see your heart and what you do with kids and, uh, your passion, so thank you. Uh, sometimes in EC world, we can get bogged down in paperwork, but you take care of kids first, and we appreciate that. Well done. All right, last but not least, this, this gentleman, Mr. Steve Russell, is our head custodian Blackburn, treats it like his home, and so of course it's spick and span. We're very thankful for all you do, uh, Mr. Russell. And, uh, the other thing he does too, I mentioned this the other day, is he's able to do some, some small routine maintenance. Uh, sometimes our air goes out of Blackburn, uh, everywhere, but, uh, he's able to get things going for us. Does a lot of different things that, uh, maybe sometimes we have to call maintenance at other places, but you do it yourself, Steve, so we really appreciate that. Come on up.
Next item on the agenda is public comments, which will be led by Clayton Mullis. The Cataba County Board of Education appreciates and welcomes all public comments. Members of the public who have signed up to speak may address the board members on any topic of concern during public comment section of regular meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the Cataba County Board of Education members. A time clock will be displayed to assist each speaker with their three-minute time limit. Speakers should direct comments to board members rather than to the audience. Comments by members of the public should be respectful, without slander towards any other member of the public, community member, or members, or any member of the Cataba County Board of Education. Any displays of approval or disapproval are out of order unless otherwise directed by the board chair. Uh, first person, uh, for public comment tonight is Kimberly Turk.
Thank you, and good evening. I think I watched my principal age ten years over the last month, because he had to tell three good teachers that they were not going to have a job at my high school next year. As much as I would like to blame the federal government and the potential cuts coming our way, that isn't why we lost these positions. These losses, those losses, if they happen, won't hit us until at least next school year. We lost these teachers because we have fewer students enrolling at our school. That might leave you confused, because I've heard discussions in here about how we're going to exceed our capacity over the next few years. Why then did we lose three teachers? The only reason I've been able to come up with is that because students are leaving Cataba County Schools and moving to private schools. I drive past one of our local private schools every day. They've expanded their footprint over the last few months. They have a large sign out front that says they offer financial aid and scholarships. Those funds are coming from our pockets. Those state tax dollars are going to send children to a religious private school, thanks to vouchers, that do not have to hire licensed teachers, they do not have to teach a state curriculum, they do not participate in state testing, and there is no monitoring by federal or state education entities. They are also not required to take every student that comes through their door. Some of you ran for school board by telling your constituents that Cataba County Schools had porno books in their libraries and teach critical race theory and social and emotional learning. You held up signs that said our math and reading test scores were in the forties, without explaining that that is above the state average proficiency. You were elected because you told your constituents that Cataba County Schools were failing while simultaneously indoctrinating their children. It makes sense, then, that people would be taking their kids out of our schools and using our tax dollars to enroll them in private schools that have been endorsed by our state and federal candidates who have pushed for increased use of vouchers, while also saying that our schools are failing and are liberal indoctrination centers. You are now in charge, and it is on your shoulders that these words now fall.
Thank you, Dr. Turk. Uh, next speaker is Kevin Sparks.
Good evening. If I could be involved just a moment, Ms. Yang's artwork is really remarkable, and I encourage everyone to take a close look at it. It's actually a meta-statement on modern art. Uh, the essay underneath refers to several modern schools, art theory, of cubism and others. The artwork itself is this very modern school called, uh, photorealism, anyway. I think it's really a remarkable piece. It's the first I've seen it, but I cannot take my eyes off of it. It's really a wonderful piece, and I congratulate you for promoting such a thing in our schools. I really admire it. I really admire it. I want to talk tonight about intent versus impact. I have no idea what anyone's intent is because it's impossible to know what's really going on in someone else's mind. What becomes concrete and incontrovertible is impact. The problem is, we can say our intent is something and that's all fine and good. Impact comes sometimes long after our actions. I couldn't have asked for a better segue than to have Dr. Turk speak just before me. My question for this board is not, what is your intent? Because we've already established this, that's kind of a meaningless circular kind of conversation. My question is, will you write down your goals for this school system? I'm going to explain what I mean by that. And I know something about this. I worked in the corporate world for quite a while and I was trained to work with business units to develop scorecards for how they judge themselves. Reading and math tests are not the right metric. What we all want is excellent education. I've heard a number of y'all say this. We want independent thinkers. It says so right in the introductory paragraph of our school charters and our policies. How do we know we're getting there? I have a specific suggestion and I'm making this suggestion as an offer to help. I offer this help knowing that not once, once, I've had a response from a board member. I'm willing to meet with anyone and help on this matter. It's called a balanced scorecard. You come down with goals that are specific, measurable, actionable, realistic and time-based. Smart, see, it's Wall Street marketing. Then, when y'all meet in your working sessions, you go over the scorecard. How are we doing? What shall we measure? Are we measuring the right things? As I say, I'm happy to help with this and I hope we could work together. Thank you.
Mr. Spark. You, Dr. Sparks.
Our last speaker will be from our online public comments and that'll be Mr. David Nields.
Good evening. Hi, my name's David Nields and I have 42 years' experience of teaching. And I've taught literally every age from the age of two to 102. And this is my second time speaking before the board, so thank you before your time. Now, when I was a kid, I read Doc Savage books. Most people here probably don't know Doc Savage, but man, I loved those books. Here's the secret. I bought them because of the covers. They were so lurid. Doc Savage had a shirt torn and, you know, there was some buxom woman with an equally torn shirt and some monster in the background. I ate them up. It was only years later that I realized how terrible those books were. They were not written by one person. They were written by a stable of writers and full of racist and sexist caricatures. But I digress. Now, liberty is a word that gets tossed around a lot these days. I mean, there's both the American Civil Liberties Union and Moms for Liberty and those organizations don't resemble each other at all. And yes, I believe that you are at liberty to decide what book your child checks out of the library. But I also believe that you don't get to decide what my daughter can't read and that's liberty. And I've heard the argument that taking books out of the library doesn't mean that my daughter can't read what she wants to. And it's true, in my house, I have that option. That if my daughter wants to read Vampire Lesbians from Outer Space, I can go to Amazon, purchase it and download it to her Kindle. So that's true. Now during COVID, when students went home and accessing school through the internet, it turns out that the 20% of the students where I was working did not have internet at home. The solution was to have their parents drive them to the school parking lot and sit there all day long so they could access the, you know, school's wifi. Some students don't have options and when you take books out of the library, you're not depriving me of access, but you're depriving somebody of access. And I get it, things are challenging. We have lockdowns and active shooter drills and clear backpacks and students who come to school hungry. Taking a book out of the library is, okay, you're going to laugh, relatively easy. There's other problems and you've done something tangible, but the intangible damage is greater because if a student is interested in something, even if it's crap, then they will learn. And if you take away that interest, then they won't. Now, you remember all those Doc Savage books I talked about, about how trashy they were? You know what they did to me? They turned me into a reader. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nields.
Next item on our agenda are the consent items for this month, which will be led by Dr. Stover.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzermeyer. In front of you are our consent items and we are looking for approval this evening.
Make a motion to approve these consent items.
Second.
I've heard a motion in a second on approval of all the consent items. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, so raise hand for approval. That is unanimous for all the consent items. We will now move on to unfinished business. Number two, approval of proposed amendment to Catawba County Board of Education Policy 4.2000, attendance policy guided by Crystal Davis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board members. This policy was on our last agenda, but Dr. Barnett pointed out that I had not included the limitation on the number of absences for elementary, middle and high school as far as written excuses. So everything has remained the same as was last month. What has been changed is in, on page three, subsection, it's C, actually, from page two, excused absences. If you look on page three at the beginning, what I asserted in was, if the school administration receives your preferred excuse on the day, then I've got parentheses, or within, got within, three days, the student returns an absence, the absences will be coded as unexcused. That's part of the addition that Mr. Miller wanted. I'll go through the rest of it in a second. What I am asking you, I did not get clarification at the last board meeting, is whether the written excuse needs to be turned in on the day the student returns for an absence or within three days after the student returns for an absence. It's always been the day the student returns, but my question to you guys is, do you want to give them the three day grace period to get the written notice in to the administration? It's up to you. Just eat on that one. So that's one change, but I do need your direction on that. And then the next change is just in the second paragraph on page three, written excuses prepared and signed by parents, this is the limitation, or guardians, will be accepted for only five absences each semester for high school students and 10 absences for the entire school year for elementary and middle school students. Written documentation from a doctor, dentist or a court official must be submitted for absences beyond the limits of five and 10 respectively in order to officially be coded as excused. That was to give discretion to the administrators to limit the number of handwritten excuses. Doesn't mean that a doctor's excuses, I mean, chronic absences due to illness or illnesses due to chronic, absences due to chronic illness are accepted in another section of this. So those are the only changes since last month, but I do need direction on whether you want the appropriate written excuse by parent to be due on the day the student returns or within three days after the student returns after an absence.
I would like to at least give the parents a grace period of three days. I don't know how everyone else feels, but that's my opinion.
Would the three day grace period be something new or is that something that's...
In the past, we've not had the three day grace period. Principals may have allowed it in their discretion, but it was not in the policy.
I'd ask Mr. Miller, has that been a big issue, big issue on that?
It's definitely a common practice to allow three days, even though the policy is...
It sounds like Mr. Miller brought this to us, so that may be, must be something that principals are requesting or in favor of. We'd like to do what supports them.
Yeah, I think so. I think when you go beyond that three day period, then it starts becoming a little bit of a chase.
Yeah. I'm sure there are some logistics to it too of keeping up with the dates, but just to date the note even as the teacher receives it. And then, of course, we've got the date of the absence, so.
Well, and again, that was my point in bringing it up to you guys. It's an awful lot of work for them to also keep track of, you know, we've got it. Technically, absences need to be logged in at that moment, so, I mean, when it happens. And so if they're excused or not, I guess you're going to wait three days to determine whether it's excused. So again, that's why I brought it up. I wanted the board to be aware that that is, it's your option to make. Don't mind either way. It's just that it's more work, in my opinion, on the administrators and you're actually changing a record from one to the other once the note comes in.
The other side of that is if the day that the child returns, if the note's not there, but it comes the next day, I imagine the principal tries to give that some consideration. So either way, there may be some record changing involved.
So either way, it sounds to me like everybody's majority is saying for the, give them three days, give the parents three days. And if that's the case, I would ask for a motion to approve the proposed changes to this with the added clear change of giving the parents three days to return their own written excuse.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second for approval of proposed amendment to Catawba County Board of Education Policy 4.2000, adding in a three day period to return, once they return to school to have a note. Got the motion...
A parent's note.
A parent's note for the excuse of being absent. Is there any further discussion?
Kimberly, could you keep us kind of informed too if that becomes an issue or burdensome for our administrators? I think we'd like to keep an eye on it.
I have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, raise a hand. And that's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is approval of the 2025 to 2028 academically or intellectually gifted AIG plan for Catawba County schools. This will be the second reading by Janelle Eisenhour.
Mr. Chair, Board members, Dr. Stover, thank you. Last month, I provided you with the original copy of the AIG plan so that y'all could read it and then provide any feedback or if I can answer any questions about the plan itself.
Seems very well put together and a lot of reading in there for sure. Does anybody have any comments about the AIG plan? Not, I seek a motion for approval of the 2025 to 2028 academically or intellectually gifted plan for Catawba County schools.
Like to make the motion that we approve the AIG plan for '25 to '28 as it's been presented to us on a second reading.
I'll second that.
Hearing a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I need to see a raise of hand for approval. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval of 2025, 2026 rollover distributor bids and community eligibility provision for universal free breakfast changes for nutrition.
That's a lot.
Barrier.
Hi, good evening. So I am here to seek approval to roll over all of our bids for next school year. But we do have a couple of things coming up with school nutrition. School nutrition and Quest are partnering together and we're going to offer a super snack at the elementary sites next school year. So what that means is whenever students get out of school, they can come, get a meal. It'll be a little bit of a mix of a hot and cold option. And right after school, that way, parents going to pick up their students, aren't starving whenever they pick them up, right? You know, fall practice or whatever else after school. And then we have the universal free breakfast program and CEP. So CEP, we are adding Jacob's Fork to our list. We're going to reestablish our schools, so that will give us four more years for all of those schools listed under CEP. And then we are going to, I've been piloting two schools this year, Jacob's Fork and Maiden High School on our universal breakfast program and feel comfortable with adding the schools that are not included in CEP, at least in universal free breakfast program. So if you have any questions about any of that, let me know.
Ask about the super snack. I thought that sounded like an important program for the children. Will that be based on free and reduced or is it free to all children or what will the cost be if not?
It will be free to all schools or all Quest sites except Cheryl's Board, but it is free, reduced, paid. So we would not charge students for that. We just would not seek reimbursement for those students, so, yeah.
I have a question. Last time we spoke, we talked about the 60,000 that you were going to be short in providing the fresh routes. Have you been able to figure that out? Have we made any progress on that about how to get that worked out?
Right now, we received an email from our representative, I think, last week and there's no movement on local school foods. So at this point, I don't see anything changing receiving that money, but we only received that grant for two years and, well, a year and a half really. So we know how to operate without those funds. It was just a nice little lump of money that we could use to do a few different things that we normally couldn't do.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions on the approval of the rollover distributor bids and community eligibility provision? Hearing none, I seek a motion for approval for the 2025, 2026 rollover distributor bids and community eligibility provision, DEP, universal free breakfast changes for school nutrition.
Make a motion that we approve the rollover distribution bids for 2025, '26 for our school nutrition department.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I see a raise of hand for approval for 2025, 2026 rollover distributor bids and that is unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Seltzermeyer. Members of the board, I hope to do this as well as Ray Thompson. She is at a PANK conference and we missed her tonight. She's probably listening. Hello, Ray. All right, so the board asked us to draft some calendars for the following school year, which by the way, in church the other day, four people approached me and said, "I'm so glad y'all are looking at calendars for the year after next. We always plan our vacation." I said, "I will tell them that. In fact, I'm doing that presentation." So there's some feedback. So what we did, I say we, Ms. Thompson contacted our schools, and we ran the four calendars to our BLTs, Building Leadership Teams. And we have draft one, the traditional start and spring break, draft two, the separate spring break, draft three, the early start, and then draft four, early start, separate spring break. So attached is the feedback. To say it's, well, you have 55, about 55% on some and 44% on others. Starting with the first one, our staff would prefer to begin school on August 9th at 44, August 24th at 55%. So, again, that is coming from each BLT. We asked them to respond, one from each school. However, some, a couple of sites chose to do it differently. And so we had separate feedback from each of those. So we tried to calculate that in, but it made it a little misleading because then we had two schools that followed their own rules. So, that being said, they all want to give feedback. That being said, you have two schools in there that have four additional inputs versus the other. But I didn't want to not include that because you asked for feedback, and now you got it. So, as things are somewhat complicated, it's like when you give out homework, it all doesn't come back the same, does it? And I can continue to read this, but I don't want to read to y'all. My past experience, I've been doing calendars since 2011, and the bottom line is, you're not going to please everybody. I noticed that elementary kind of rolls together, and then you have your middle grades and high schools kind of roll together. It's just different needs. So it is a difficult task.
I would just like to mention to the board, I'm sure the board's kept up with it, too, that there's some movement in the General Assembly about a calendar law, changing the calendar law and giving us a little flexibility. In fact, the North Carolina School Board's Board of Directors, we were surveyed to ask if we already had a '26, '27 calendar, how it would fit within the parameters of what the General Assembly's looking at. But one of the things that was included, that is included in that, is that they are looking at having some teeth to the law that if you don't follow the parameters, that there would be some sanctions against our schools. So I think it's wise to take a good look, but maybe we'll have some parameters, maybe there will be some changes in the General Assembly.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I didn't like about what they had was the balanced calendar, and I don't know how balanced they want it to be, if they want it to be perfectly numbered.
Right. It was not, some of the choices were not good choices.
Then if you start with a traditional date, they didn't care about how many days you win or that. It just seemed kind of odd, the way that they proposed this calendar law, that we didn't balance the days best or the other. But they're not saying if there's like a 10% where it falls.
Yeah.
All standing now, we have like 78 in the first and then 87 in the second.
Yeah.
If we started those three days early, we would have 81 and 87, so still there's six days difference.
Yeah, we would still have a discrepancy similar to what we have now.
I agree, Mr. Settlemeyer. I think we've done a better job balancing it than the state plan right now.
So thank you for putting this together. We don't have to do anything with this tonight, do we, because of this pending House bill thing? And I guess I would like some direction on if they're really going to stand by this exact number, if it's going to be the exact number of days that it has to balance, or within 10 days it has to balance. I guess I would like them to make that decision and tell us what they're going to do on that end of it.
Yeah.
Before we really put a '26, '27 calendar together, if that's the consensus with everybody else on this board.
I'm hopeful that the budget bill will come through July 1. I think everybody's aiming for that in Raleigh. You know, I've heard that before, though. So hopefully, though, if it is, if they do come together and make that happen, then, you know, we might be able to have something back to you in July, and you're still a year ahead. So, and I know the public would, at least the four folks that approached me in church were thankful, so. Just table.
Thank you, Dr. Stover.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is approval of a multi-year contract with Parent Square, including Smart Sites, presented by Ms. Kim Jordan.
We'll talk about the money first.
It'll be Kim Jordan.
Okay.
It'll be Kim Jordan and Ms. Davis.
Good evening, Chairman Settlemeyer, members of the board. I come to you this evening with a proposal for a three, or it's a multi-year, three-year contract with Parent Square. The agreement would be to, would include not only Parent Square, which is called Engage 2025, which is what we currently use as our two-way parent communication system, and we have a lot of positive feedback from both our staff and our stakeholders about our Parent Square communication. But it also includes moving from Final Site to Smart Sites, which is underneath the Parent Square umbrella, and having our website also be provided in a bundle at a substantial cost savings over what we are currently paying as we're paying Final Site and Parent Square separately. So I'm trying to find. That's not that one. It's none of those. Is it order form? Oh, there we go. So just to share some of the costs with you, Smart Sites, which would be the new website through Parent Square, has an onboarding total of $5,400. That is a one-time fee to help us with onboarding, project management, getting our site launched, and migrating some of our content from our current website to our new website. And then they are prorating the first payment to start July 1 at $4,600. Then Smart Sites. A lot. So then Smart Sites would be $18,400 a year, starting July 1, 2025, for three consecutive years. That's what the contract length is. And then the Engage 2025, which is our Parent Square and Student Square, which we currently use for our two-way communication, is based on step pricing over three years, but bundled so that we are, we would start out paying 48.3 for July 2026, 57.15 on 2027, and $46,000 on July 1, 2025, in addition to the $18,400 a year. That bundling cost this year for us is $63,652, and it is a $35,000 cost savings over three years from doing it separately. Believe that our cost individually last year was more than $60,000 just for Parent Square. So I'm here seeking approval for the contract of the Parent Square Engage 2025 and Smart Sites for our web service provider. And Crystal has all the details of the contract. I'll turn it over to her.
Proposed contract, I had spoken with Bing Craft. I wanted to use this opportunity to kind of educate you guys on how these contracts come to be. The reason, and also wanted you to make sure you saw the actual proposed changes and the rejection of some of them. The primary reason is because there were lots of questions about the contracts with Power School, and how are they not responsible? And they were negligent, and how is their liability limited to what it's limited to? Well, first of all, I want to explain that there is a new way of doing business with software companies, not just related to school systems, but in general. It has to do, number first, or number first, number one, with digital agreements. Those agreements look like they're one agreement, but they have links to other online policies or terms, and those links are throughout the agreement. So it looks like you just have maybe a four or five-page agreement, but really, when push comes to shove, you are looking at a total of about four or five agreements. In this case, this agreement that was, that is originally proposed, and I'm not saying anything negative about Parent Square. I think they're a great company, great deals. I could not, I could, but I want you guys to understand what you're signing, what I've objected to, and how that shakes out in the real world, okay? Hopefully, it won't take very long. So if you'll follow along, and Marty, are you looking? Okay. So the first thing is, I want to explain one more thing, and you can ask Marty, you can talk with Kim. It is the trend, it is the norm now in the law, in the world of contracts, for software companies to say in the body of the agreement, "We reserve the right to make changes to the terms of this contract upon 45 days' notice to you guys." Okay? That's shocking to me as an attorney, and it should be shocking to anybody who ever wants to sign an agreement. But in this day and time, it's sign it rails, okay? So in this proposal, like in so many others, there is a link to additional terms and conditions of a contract. You sign this, but you're also signing the link that you may not have even read. And that link says, and the contract says, "We reserve the right, the company reserves the right to make changes to the terms and conditions of this contract upon so many days' notice to you guys." Period. Don't care if you object or not. All right. And in the world of contract law, that, in my opinion, is an illusory agreement, which means it's not really an agreement. It's not even an agreement to agree. You're giving one person the authority to change, it's a unilateral agreement to change the terms and conditions of the agreement at any time. That's just something I want you to be aware of. As far as, I mean, as far as your personal lives, I'm sorry, you can use that, too, but as far as you're representing the school system, be aware of that. So the one thing that I always do with these companies is actually read the agreement and then determine what is also attached to this agreement. There were, as we found out, there were four different attachments, four different things that could have changed, including this agreement. So it was a total of five agreements in one. There were, in other words, there were four additional links to this contract. What I propose is that we not keep those as links, and I'm old-fashioned, getting really gray-headed, showing up since my mom's been sick, so I hadn't had my hair cut, but the, I'm old-fashioned, and I believe in attaching those as an exhibit so that you know what is actually incorporated and made a part of that agreement. So the first thing I did was say the entire agreement consists of, and we listed them, four different things. School agreement, any applicable specific terms, the order of form, and any separate written agreement signed by the parties. Okay? And so we have those four. And in addition, by the way, we've also made the order form a part of it. And then we attach those as exhibits. And as you go down in the definitions, you will see that I have asked them to define each of those things that they define as correlated to an attached exhibit. So you'll see references to Exhibit A, B, you see on the privacy policy I've stricken out, "found at HTTPS," because that's one of the links. I have also stricken out in terms of use. And then there is a specific term of use that is, we've also attached as Exhibit D, which you have. All right. So the reason for me doing that is because I want the board to have some control over what they're proposing to change. We now know in paper form, and we can have it digitally, too, although right now, I think it's easier for you to understand if it's attached as each exhibit and not a link that's subject to change, a digital link that's subject to change. So we now know what the terms of the agreement are, because we got all the exhibits in one place. The next proposed change is in Section 2.3. What I suggested is that to take out the word, because they said during the subscription term, "Parents Square will provide district with," they said, "standard support for subscription services at no additional charge." Well, there was no definition anywhere of the word "standard." So I simply said to them, "Either define what standard support is, or take out the word 'standard' and say you'll supplies with support." Their response was to define, and you can see it's underlined there, "defined standard support includes email, chat, and phone support, maintenance updates, online help articles, and training modules for users." Okay? If the board is okay with that, I'm okay. They have now defined it. So so far, all of the proposed changes, you can check off, they've agreed to all the ones above now, the A, B, C, and D. They've agreed to 2.3. You see my proposed change, and you see what they've agreed to, which is underlined in red. So scroll down to the next change. The next, under Section 2.5, as far as safeguards, I had added in the language, "During the subscription term, Parents Square will keep all," and I had just information, "provided by district to Parents Square confidential." And they added "district data information," which is found by me. So you can check off that, that we are in agreement on 2.5 changes. It will include what's in red and what's underlined in red, or burgundy. It looks like burgundy to me. Now, under 2.5, you'll see in blue that I have worn the board. That's a note to me. The point of this warning is to tell you that they're not guaranteeing, and nobody can or will in the tech world, they're not guaranteeing 100% protection that they won't be hacked. Okay? 2.5 gives them wiggle room. It says that they will use reason, they will comply with, will maintain appropriate, what's that? Administrative, physical, and technical safeguards, insistent with, here's the, here's the words that are important, generally accepted educational technology practices to protect the security, confidentiality, and integrity of the subscription services, including reasonable data backups. Gone are the days when you have a brick and mortar building that somebody has to break into to get access to your data. We are now in the world of hacks. As Marty said at the last board meeting, they get a cybersecurity threat every day. Am I, did I say that correctly? All right. So I'm warned, I put the warning in there to let you know that I know that they will not agree to any other language. I did add in that they would keep everything confidential. They agreed to that. But I need to warn you that this is not 100% hack proof, hack proof. It's not because I haven't done my job, it's not because they're trying to cheat, it's because there are hackers out there. Just like before, technology, there were burglars, okay? There are hackers, and technology and digital data can be hacked. All right. So I'm, you can check off 2.5, they're not going to change anything else, and I've, that's all I could get them to agree to. All right. The next are changes to the agreement, which is what we focused- The next are changes to the agreement, which is what we focused on. What they originally had in there is what I struck through and read. Excuse me, that's not correct. What they originally had in there is that they, they will make, they can make changes to the agreement by giving you notice within 45 days. And I said, they can make, they, I wanted to reword it to say, "They may not make any changes to the terms of any parts of the agreement unless such changes are approved in writing by the District from time to time," whatever that y'all agreed to. But that you first had to agree in writing. They absolutely, you can see in the comment section, they rejected that and said, "It's absolutely necessary. We ask that you withdraw, withdraw your changes to this section, incorporate what I've included back here as modified. They must retain the right to make changes to these documents. However, this provision is written, allows the District to remain governed by the terms that it had previously agreed to if the District objects to the changes." So what we agreed upon, and this is not exactly saying yet, is that Parents Square may propose changes to the agreement. And, and if they give us notice to the superintendent, and I didn't name this one, to the superintendent or his designee, and if you want to say Board Attorney or Board Chair, you can do that too. This is one you circle because we're coming back to that. If they give notice of the proposed change, and we don't object within 45 days, then the change is made without our written consent. However, if we do object within 45 days, then they won't make the change with regard to us. Now, to me, it's just as easy to do it by consent, but they are banking on not all of us being here, and I say "they," I'm not talking about Parents Square, but not all of us being here and us not catching the notice. That's the bottom line. These companies are. So what I'm proposing, or not proposing, what I'm telling you is that they're, they have compromised, but they are also willing to dial on that heel and say, "We do not agree with this provision, and we're not going to sign a contract." And as you said, it's a good deal. But I want you to be aware of the fact that this is giving them the ability to make changes to the agreement if Superintendent moves, retires, Kim Jordan moves, retires, the Board Chair changes, and suddenly, somebody didn't recognize that Parents Square sent a message about a proposed change to a contract. It's also important because they also want to retain the right to sell themselves, assign their contracts to another company. So not only do you have to keep track of the fact that Parents Square is proposing a change to an agreement, but that Parents Square's beneficiaries or, or the people they sold themselves to or contracted with or assigned, that you have to keep track of their name too. So circle that one. That one's, that one's still an issue. You've got to decide. The other ones are done. I'm just letting you know the history.
Crystal, in, on that part, would they have to let us know if they're sold to another company?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get to that in a minute.
Okay.
All right. So then the next change, that's just me referring to, 5.1 is me referring to Attached Exhibit A, which is the quote that Ms. Jordan went over. Okay. So 5.2, fee increases. They agree. They agree to all those changes. So 5.2 is a check. 5.4, they agreed to that change, so that's check. Termination by District. I wanted to also add in that they, we, we can terminate at any time upon certain number of days, upon 30 days' written notice to Parents Square. We don't have to continue in this contract if we don't. And that we will get a refund, prorata refund of what we didn't use. And of course, they rejected that. And you see the comment, which says, "We must ask you to restore this provision. 6.3 is written, as written, we do not offer refunds for a termination for convenience." So what they're saying is they will agree that we can terminate upon 30 days' written notice. But anything we've paid in advance, prorata, they will not refund. Okay? So we can leave that in there, but they're gonna, they're not going to agree to a refund. All right. So that's kind of done. That's check. All right. But they're also agreeing to, to strike out the rest of that, which was good. Uh, for, go back to 6.4. Warn the board. Did I miss any other warn the boards? Let me see here. Yeah, okay. Under 6.1. Just letting you know, again, this is a typical provision in a, a contract. At the District's request, Parents Square will destroy or return all the District data within 60 days. That means if we end our contract with, with Parents Square, and just FYI, this isn't the first, nor will it be the last type of company we deal with. We've gone from Blackboard Connect, that was the first one. I mean, there's been a litany of them. This, this has changed multiple times. So at the time, we terminate our relationship with Parents Square. They, they say they will destroy or return all the data within 60 days of the expiration of the term of the agreement, unless otherwise required by law, or Parents Square receives District's request in writing that Parents Square retains certain District data for a specific longer period of time. And if we do ask them to retain it, they're going to charge us money to thousands. Okay? So that is a warning to the board. At number one, we've got to ask them within 60 days after we terminate their agreement to return the data to us or keep it and store it. And if we ask them to store it, they're going to charge us more. Again, I did, that's, that is something that's settled. They're not going to change it. I would propose they change it, but they're not going to. It's never changed. That's the way of doing business now in the digital world. So that's a warning to the board and whoever's in this position. All right. Next is seven, the warranty disclaimer. I added in because in all the other attachments, there was, what, there's language modifying anything relating to the disclaimer or warranty in the attachments, the links. So I, I simply say, I know they won't change this, but except as otherwise provided in this agreement, any other terms and provisions in the agreement, means that all five of them, or all four of them, related to warranties are null and void. So this written agreement takes priority. But what I'm warning you about is they're not warranting anything. Everything you're, you're getting under this contract is as is, without warranty of any kind, whether express or implied, statutory or otherwise. To, and they exclude to the fullest, fullest extent permitted by law, all other warranties with express, implied, statutory, or otherwise, even fitness for a particular purpose, marketability, title, and satisfactory quality. That is the same as saying, "I have a warranty on my car that I just bought, but it's worthless. I'm not promising you it's drivable." That's how extreme that limitation on warranty is. Again, I don't expect them to change it because that's the way business is done now, and it's either "sign it or else." But my duty is to warn the board that you cannot expect any warranty from this company and many other companies that you do business with. Next is limitation of liability. Same kind of thing. They had conflicting things in the, in the attachments, so I limited it to this one. However, it ain't good news because the limitation of liability says, "In no event will they be responsible for damages over and above what we've paid." So you've heard of, you've heard of direct damages. That's the cost you incurred in the contract. Consequential damages are damages you may have, you may have suffered as a result of their breach. But remember, they're not warranting anything, right? So, so damages you have suffered as a result of their breach are not included. They are absolute, we are agreeing that we will not pay them for any consequential damages. The only amount recoverable is the amount of what we've paid them. Case in point, Power School. That's another reason why, well, we'll get into that later. But that was the same language in, or similar language in other IT contracts. All right. The next one. Same with the liability cap. They had different, different things. I just asked for it to be the same, for the, or excuse me, for this language to be what's read. And again, that's saying that's basically the same thing in a little bit different way, that there is a maximum cap aggregate liability relating to any damages relating to this agreement. Now, I did, in, in no event, that 8.3 says, "In no event shall anything in this agreement be construed as requiring District to indemnify Parents Square." Well, I wanted to point out that that's a good thing. I mean, thank goodness. But, but it also, there's no assurance that they will indemnify us from anything. For example, if confidential information is hacked and we are sued for contracting with Parents Square and signing this contract that has no warranty and no ability to sue beyond the maximum amount of the contract, then they're not indemnifying us either. So that's another warning to the board. Again, I'm not trying to scare you all and keep you from signing this. I'm just making sure that you know what you're signing. Because these, these animals have changed stripes over the years. Contracts used to be, "Say what you mean and mean what you say." And now you've got all these links, and people can modify it without your consent. So again, I'm just warning. 10.2, severability. Well, I've added, they, 10.1, they've agreed to that, that we would be subject to Central District of California. Well, I changed that to North Carolina. 10.2, severability. I struck out that, again, this is an agreement to agree. If any provision of the agreement is held invalid, that provision will be, will be deemed amended to achieve as nearly as possible the same effect. And that's not typical. It's, it's that, if any provision is held invalid, then the remainder of agreement will be in full force and effect, but that will be deemed invalid. Okay? Next change. Modification and waiver. I did, they did keep this in as I put it, but there was no change to it. So we're leaving it in there. But except as provided in Section 3, which they say they got the 45 days' notice to us, nothing may be modified except upon written approval of the District. And then I've added in that. So 10.7 is a check. We all agree on that. 10.8 is where they talk about assigning it, selling their, selling themselves to some other organization. I had proposed that it say, what's stricken out in red, "This agreement is not assignable by Parents Square except upon written approval by the District." Okay? And then they wanted to change it to, "The agreement is not assignable by Parents Square except to an affiliate," or, go back, go left, Marty, "or in connection with a merger, acquisition, sale of asset, or similar change of control transaction." And just letting you know that we've got to keep up with who they become. All right. So that one's a check because we agree to their proposal. Well, they're insisting on it. And then they wanted to add ink at the bottom after Parents Square, which is fine. They'll notarize it, but the notary will be in California, which is fine. The notary doesn't have to be here. And I think that's it. I've stricken out all these other references that they have. See, this is how they've, they changed things in the past, so that's stricken. So this will be printed, and the exhibit's attached. And then the proposed, the request for approval is, you've heard from Ms. Jordan about the quotes, and then you've heard from me about the proposed changes. The only thing I need approval from is on the language regarding the changes that, that we, that that language be reflected, that you grant authority to the Chairman to sign the contract with my proposed changes, the changes they agreed upon, and the change that, any modification they make, they have to give us 45 days' notice. And if we object to the change within 45 days, the change is not made. If we don't, the change is made. And that that notice must be given to the Superintendent, the then Superintendent of the School District, or the Board Chair. And I would say, "And the Board Chair." And the second change is that they be allowed to assign the document as they proposed with the changes. So that needs to be the motion if you're, if you're wanting to do it. But I did want to take the time to explain to you guys that, I mean, I know there's a lot of talk going on now about Power School and the breaches and so forth. And anybody else who deals with technology, Marty, I mean, am I, am I crazy? Or it's the way things are happening now? We would need a motion to approve it, as I explained.
We're not.
Hearing all that, is there any further discussion or any more questions for either Ms. Jordan or Crystal Davis? God, I seek a motion for approval of proposed multi-year contract with Parents Square, including smart sites with all the amendments proposed by Ms. Davis, Crystal Davis on the contract and the language, and adding in Superintendent and Board Chair.
That's up to be notified in the event.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make that motion.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in approval who have raised hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you, Chairman Solmeyer, board members. I think what I had to present is slightly less complicated than what Ms. Davis presented in the contract. First, asking for your approval to revise the summer learning plan. And the only thing we're going to ask you to approve is allowing our elementary schools to do remediation and second administration of EOGs before the end of the school year. We just learned about a month ago that we could do this. This is a change in the past. We've not been able to do this. We've had to do it after the school year ended. We met with all of our principals and realized that our elementary principals wanted to try to do the remediation and second administration before the end of the school year. But our middle and high school principals didn't feel like they could do it and do it well because their testing, especially high school, runs longer in the school year. Whereas our elementary folks, they start testing really that week before the last week of school. And they felt like they could test, get their scores back, remediate, and retest before that last school day. And again, our middle school, it would have been tough for them, and then our high school almost impossible. So we're asking for your approval to revise that to allow our elementary schools to remediate and do the second admin before the end of the school. You want to take these piece by piece, or?
I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a good plan. It sounds like you said that elementary guys are all for it. The elementary principals are all for this plan.
Yes. You want to go through the next ones? You want to? Okay. No, no, you're fine. So the, the next things that I have involve funding and a request to purchase different things. First is the request to use learning-focused schools again for this coming school year, '25, '26, to provide professional year, 25, 26, to provide professional development to our principals in the way of closing gaps in our ATS I schools, administrator instructor coaching, instructional coaching, sorry, and also provide training in the areas of rigor and engagement, which we continue to really focus on in CNI. This funding comes from our ATS I money that is provided by the state. And this year, we received approximately $185,000 for those ATS I schools. So 37,800 of it would go towards that ATS I funding that we receive. Any questions about that? The next request would be for letter land materials. This is a continuation of what we started doing this school year. We updated our kindergarten and first grade letter land materials this year. They, they being letter land, I'm sorry. They are doing these updates to match the science of reading and the letters training that all of our elementary teachers have to complete as they enter the profession. Updates will be paid for by PRC 085 money, which is state money. That's be used for literacy. And so this will just be used to help with the letter land purchase for second grade. And ideally, we would come back to you again next year at this time and ask for updates for third grade. So it kind of follows students as they go up. And then the last request that we have is funding for Trafara Chromebooks for the EC department. There would be 50 Chromebooks that would be purchased at a cost of $40,606. And state EC funds will be used to purchase these Chromebooks. They are Lenovo 14E Gen 3 Chromebooks, again, for our EC department. Any questions about any of those things?
Are these for the staff and students, these Chromebooks?
Staff, Mr. Solmeyer.
Is there any further questions for Mr. Miller on number five or number six items? Hearing none, I request a motion for approval for number five for the revised 2025 summer learning plan for Top County Schools. Number six, approval of curriculum and instruction department purchases for the 2025, 2026 school year for those three items.
Make a motion.
A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd see a raised hands for approval. And that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approval for a one-year renewal quote from Instructure for Canvas Learning Management System for 2025, 2026 school year by Mr. Marty Sharp.
Chairman, members of the board, I come in front of you today to request a continuation of our utilization of Canvas, which is our learning management system in grade six through 12. This is based off of a state convenience contract, again, with a grand total, with the grand total, $56,883.84. Let me check real quick though. If they, yeah. Just want to make sure because we have the, also wanted to look at adding that tier one support, what that tier one support actually does for us. It gives our teachers direct access to support to deal with a lot of cross enrollment issues that we run into. Unfortunately, we do not have the staff to kind of maintain all of these cross enrollments. So what we do is ask the teachers who need cross enrollment to occur to reach out to their direct support, and they work through the process. So any additional questions about the learning management system?
Hearing no questions, I'd like to, a motion to approve the one-year renewal quote from Instructure for Canvas Learning Management System for 2025, 2026.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I look for approval by a raised hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Up next is several items by Mr. Dan Moore, number eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13, 14, 15, and 16. Do you want to do all these at one time, then get approval?
Whatever the board would like for me to do, I'll be happy to apply.
Is that okay to hear all of Dan's?
Got you. All right, let's do them all.
All right, here we go. Thank you Chairman Solmeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover. Our first request, each year, superintendent shall establish a period of time which transfers will be accepted. The dates are listed before you. We request that Monday, June 2nd be the beginning of the process, the acceptance date for transfers of the 25, 26 school year. The first Monday in June has been that date for the past 15 years. And the last date being Thursday, July 31st, 2025, is the deadline to accept said transfers. Also, that tuition for out of county students would be paid by Monday, August the 11th. And that follows board policy, and that is 14 days prior to the beginning of the 25, 26 school year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this process.
Are these requests online, mail-in, walk-in with an application?
We do online primarily, and that will be sent out. Kim does a great job in getting that information out to our parents and on our website. And in the past, we've seen that continue to grow. We typically have somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 to 400 requests. Most typically, elementary schools getting closer to childcare is very much a part of that process. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to construction change directive number 12. We had an underground storage tank that we knew that was at the old Maiden East site. This was provided for in the planning for this school. This change directive is an increase of $31,230. You can see the details there. It was one 20,000 gallon underground storage tank that was removed and disposed of. And also, the fuel that was within that tank was also disposed of. So I would seek approval, or we'd be happy to answer any questions about that Hearing none, moving on to our agreement with Mobile Modular Corporation. This specifically is for Balls Creek School, but the next agreement is for St. Stevens Elementary School. We have solicited our Board of Commissioners, and they have graciously agreed to fund these two four-pack modular units, both, one at Balls Creek Elementary, the other at St. Stevens Elementary. This is from the same group that we used last year for the four-pack modular at Cheryl's Ford Elementary School. The agreement is there before you. The primary thing to consider is that the initial estimated invoice is going to be $58,673.32. That's for setup, delivery, and the first month's lease. That agreement will be the same for both schools, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about that.
Do you feel these will be set up in time for us to start back?
Yes, sir. We've been in contact with Mobile Modular. They are aware we're in the queue, in a better place than we were last year when we had those placed at Cheryl's Ford Elementary. So we feel confident that those will be in place for the beginning of the school year.
That'll be set up with the, the power and everything to it. That's not going to be an issue either?
Yes, sir. No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And from using them, the ones at Cheryl's Ford, just correctly, that we've not had any problems with the ones at Cheryl's Ford. Been good success.
No, it's been a learning experience for us. But for the most part, they've been very pleased with that product. It's worked very well. I feel like we're going to get pretty good at this over the next couple of years, to be honest with you. I think we feel more confident in getting it set up and established, and using the same company as last year will help us well. Moving on, our next approval item is a Sourcewell contract through Royal Wood Associates to finish gym floors at all of those schools that are listed in the amount of $35,608.73. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Didn't we just finish the gym at Maiden Elementary?
We did.
Something different that's going on there?
So what we do is we typically go back, especially on competition floors, is we will finish those every year. That particular floor, based on it being as new as it is, it's very important that we protect it at the onset. And so that's why we have that listed.
All right, thank you. That was the only question I have. I thought, well, we just finished the thing in December.
It's, it's new, and we want to make sure that it maintains its beauty. Our next item for approval is a agreement through Tips USA using DPS Southeast Flooring for flooring in the media center and in the office area. Carpet in the media center and in the office area, we have been using vinyl plank. We've been pretty well pleased with that. In other applications in other schools, the total amount is $72,282.62. And we have used Southeast Flooring in the past, and they've done a good job for us. Any questions? Okay, moving on, three contracts in a row. The first being with Moss Marlowe for the pre-K classroom 400 hallway renovations at Balls Creek Elementary School. I would seek your execution of that document so that we can begin that process. If you remember, at a previous board meeting, we awarded that bid, or acknowledged that bid to Moss Marlowe. Our second contract, also with Moss Marlowe Building Company, with the new HVAC systems at Claremont Elementary School. We previously acknowledged that bid and awarded that particular bid in a previous meeting. And lastly, with DDI of Hickory for the Maiden Middle School HVAC replacement project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have with regard to those contracts.
I know this is the first time you said we'll be using DDI.
Yes, sir.
And I hope it goes well. I guess just keep us posted on how that goes.
I will.
And thank you and Robert for putting all this stuff together. I know it's a big task at times to come up with all these, to bring it to the board. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. We, we're, we're hopeful, and they're excited and happy to have won the project. We have a very good architect that keeps tabs on, on progress. So I feel confident that we'll be pleased with the end result. Our next item for consideration, I would seek your approval of the recommendation by construction and maintenance staff for REI Engineers, Inc. to be the design consultants for various metal roof projects in Catawba County Schools. We sent out an RFQ at the end of the last meeting to seek an engineer to help us solve some deficiencies. We were able to get two proposals. We scored those proposals, and it would be our recommendation that REI Engineers be chosen for those services. If that approval is granted, then the next item is a master design consultant services agreement with REI for those services to help us solve some issues with metal roofs throughout the district. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
When you actually, when a school board, sorry about that, when a school board actually engages, for example, an architect, or engineer, or consultant, we are required to follow certain procedures in order to do that. And what we've chosen to do is send out a request for, proposal for information to, so that we can contract and have someone on, onboard in the event we decide to use them. So this is their outline of their consulting agreement, and any individual product, excuse me, individual product that we decide to do or need them for, will bring another contract to the board. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is the master agreement that they operate under. It does, it doesn't have anything about a specific school in it.
Thank you for clarifying that question. Well, that's a lot.
Yeah. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Moore on item eight through 16? Talk about my, Mr. Moore? Zip this out so I can move on. All right, I seek approval for new business number eight, number nine, number 10. That will be Balls Creek and St. Stevens. Number 11 for all schools. Number 12, sorry, number on number 11, all schools that were, that were on the contract. 12, number 13, contract 1, 2, 14, number 15, and number 16.
A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Not, show approval by a raised hand. That is unanimous. Next on the agenda, discussion on Board of Education Policy 3.6110 and materials, led by me. The last board meeting, we did change a different policy that had also stopped at the superintendent. We added an approval of the Board of Education. Following that policy, we're just bringing this policy with the same language that we approved the other policy for. Look for a motion to approve the change that adds the approved by the Board of Education.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's listed on the agenda that it's not here for approval, but for discussion.
All right. We can discuss it, and I think approval is necessary. All right, we can discuss it, and I'll take approval if necessary.
I would like to ask, was this something that was brought to us by the North Carolina School Board? You usually bring as Ms. Davis changes of policies to lead the schools. Is this recommended by them as a policy to lead the schools? Well, I would like to ask, I had a lot of questions when we approved some of the other policies. I had objections at that time because I felt like it's taking away the rights of our professional staff to make decisions regarding curriculum, and I just, I don't see how this is, how we're going to be able to approve as a Board of Education, every, it says textbook, supplementary textbook, library book, magazine, periodical, software, and technology resources. That means everything has to come before the Board to be approved? So, what would be the procedure, Dr. Stover? Yeah?
Well, what we could do is bring anything you guys would like to approve to you.
I think it outlines for us what has to be brought. All instructional materials, it says, including supplemental textbooks, library books, periodicals, and technological resources have to be approved by the Board. What was your reason for wanting us to approve all that and take that away from our professional staff?
My reasoning was that we were looking to incorporate the Board decision-making.
Well, it says in the first line that we're the governing board and are legally responsible for the selection of any instructional materials.
Yeah, but then you leave that out in a second. You just say it approved by the superintendent, and then you leave off anybody else.
Well, it says approved by the local school professional staff and of the superintendent or his designee. I assume you designate to our curriculum and instruction people a lot of that approval, but...
Yeah, and our principals and teachers.
Of course.
Yeah.
I just wonder what the procedure now will be to bring every one of those. How are we gonna find the time to do all that, approve and looking at all that? Plus, how are we going to provide for the education of this Board to be able to make decisions about that?
It depends on our staff and, you know, the recommendations right now from the superintendent and the professionals as it is.
So, why make the change?
So, I don't think there's anything that's changed in that regard.
We're saying that now the Board must be, that it must be approved by the Board of Education. That's exactly what's added. I think that's very dangerous, especially in light of number four, that we have to agree to provide materials on opposing sides of controversial issues so young citizens can develop under guidance the practice of analytical reading and thinking. How is a political Board going to provide opposing sides and make decisions about that?
Political Board in what way? How are you referring to us as a political Board?
This is a partisan Board. We're elected bipartisan. We're a partisan elected Board.
You're including that it's political, that we are political. I mean, I'm not sure what you're referring to in that regard.
Yeah. Yeah. I just think that it's a dangerous thing for us, for everything now suddenly to have to be approved by the Board. We haven't done that in the past, and we've done fine. In fact, why don't we stop looking at this Board approving every piece of curriculum and get on to some of the priorities of our constituents?
I would like to table this. I would like to make a motion to table this, to review other policies or other Boards as they, you know, some of their policies as well, so that we can come to a decision on how we feel and have another discussion.
And let us also look at what the policies to lead the schools says. I mean, that's what we use for every other policy.
What was your last statement?
I'd like for us, in addition, I mean, I don't see the need for us to look at other Boards, what they're doing. I'm not so much interested in what other Boards are doing, but I would like to see what our North Carolina School Boards Association says. I mean, every one of our policies are based on their policies to lead the schools. This is not a recommendation they've made.
I have a question. Where did the wording for these come from, one through five?
It was already in the policy.
It had already...
The policy since 2010, and, let's see, I started representing the school system in 2003. So, everything is sort of aligned with the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Well, and getting back to number four, if we look at that, it says to provide materials on opposing sides of controversial issues so that young citizens may develop under guidance the practice of analytical reading and thinking. I mean, is that really our job? I don't feel like we, this leaves it wide open that anything could be entered into in the classroom, and I just think that's very broad and dangerous.
So, now we're going to take out that our students won't be able to be independent thinkers because they're not going to have the other side presented to?
That's not what I'm saying. There should be, we should be able to discuss two sides, but it's just very vague about whatever topic could be brought into the classroom. And I think we need to be careful about that.
I agree, and I think really the only proposed change is what's highlighted there, to be approved by the Board of Education. I really crave transparency on this. Dr. Stover and Mr. Sellemyer, I mean, I, when I asked my first question, I saw you two exchanged glances that said a lot to me. Makes me crave transparency on what's behind this and where it's coming from.
Dr. Barnett, the request was made to discuss this tonight, and that's why...
By whom?
By the Chair, and so that's why I put it on there for discussion. I don't, that's why I don't have a plan. It's just for discussion. I'd like to just comment on the controversial topic, if I may. So, the controversial in this case, although given society right now, I understand where you're talking from, but it's controversial as in two opposing sides. So, I think about it from a civic standpoint, right? Just like as we are in elections, how would the Democrats look at, how Republicans, independents, those type of things? And although there are opposing sides, we can teach kids how to learn about all sides and approach that, just about on where to find the information and those type of things. What we do with our teachers and our principals is we use the standard course of study. So, as long as we're within that, then we're well within the guidelines. What we ask everyone to do is stay within that, right? Because it can get fuzzy nowadays, right? And we certainly don't want to offend any people, race, religion, et cetera, but at the same time, we do want to teach our kids to be critical thinkers, and our teachers do a good job with that. But I know what that looks like. I think in the other regards to Dr. Barnett's point, at some point, you do have to trust our CNI team, myself, our teachers, our principals, and like I've been saying over the last couple of years, for the most part, we've made really good decisions. We do have a checks and balance system in place. It's not perfect, right? But that is because there is so much brought into the schools, because we do give autonomy to our folks, and that isn't so we can corrupt minds. It is so that our teachers and principals have empowered educational experience to do that with our kids. So, all that to say is, I think we've built a trustworthy team, and you all know that if we see something that's out of bounds, we certainly will address it. And secondarily, if you all see something that's out of bounds, you ask us to look into it, and then our checks and balance system comes back to you all. But to your point, controversy is a big word right now, right? But our job is not to, again, and I could go into a specific example today, I won't do it, but if we see something that is out of bounds, it is corrected. And, but to police that, for the Board to really approve every single thing would be really hard.
I agree with you, Dr. Stover. I think our departments have done, our curriculum specialists have done an outstanding job. I trust you. I trust them. So, in other words, why add and approved by the Board of Education? We were fine the way we were without adding that. I just have to think there's an ulterior motive to adding that to it.
I don't have an answer, Dr. Barnett. I just want to kind of speak to you from my educational experience.
That statement may be relating to the first paragraph, says as a governing body of the system, the Board is legally responsible for the selection of instructional material. So, as a Board, we are legally responsible.
If it's covered there, why add that line?
I think that might be why that line was added, because of the first sentence, because we are legally responsible.
I disagree. There's no need to add that line if it's covered in that first sentence.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is.
Anywhere, it's just saying we're legally responsible.
Okay, then I'm reading this, that all instructional materials, including supplemental textbooks, library books, periodicals, and technological resources shall be selected upon the recommendation of the local school professional staff committee and approved by the superintendent and his or her designee and approved by the Board of Education. It's saying all materials now must, if we approve this change, all materials would have to come to us for approval.
I just want to point out to the Board now, that does not happen now, so there will need to be a process for doing that. So, it's, so that will become an issue, I think, for Dr. Stover to develop a plan, if that's the way you guys want to change it. I would also point out that unless, because you have hired Dr. Stover as your CEO, he's the CEO basically, your superintendent, you are responsible for his actions and decisions in all circumstances, as long as it's not illegal or negligent or willfully negligent or recklessly, in reckless disregard for someone else's safety. So, I mean, that's typical language in the very beginning. The second section of it is the fact that you're delegating it to the administration and the superintendent. But what you want to add back in is that you will see every single piece, which is every textbook, every library book. That's a process now, right, Dr. Stover? That is very cumbersome.
Can we put in there that the Board of Education...
Yep, that's what it already says. Yeah. It said, what it says is that, in fact, you're, it doesn't say the word delegating, but it says all instructional materials, supplemental textbooks, and technological resources shall be selected upon the recommendation of the local school professional staff and approved by the superintendent. So, that's the built-in language there that shows you are delegating it to the superintendent, and you're saying, we shall approve it, or we are approving it, based upon the fact that Dr. Stover has tapped the appropriate school staff to look into it, and then he has approved it. So, that's what it already says. It really...
He looks at all these textbooks and...
No, he's delegating it to people.
Right, so we, and just to give an example for that, we have textbook task force, we have our media specialist with our media materials, we also have a director of media as well. Then, so with books that are brought into classroom libraries, that would be through the principal, okay? So, there is a checks and balance on all of that. That being said, as I've said all along, we're a big place, lot of material. When anything's brought to our attention to inspect, we do. You know, I think that the majority of all our material right now, I can say pretty confidently that it's good stuff, right? I think what I guard against when I say that is just verbal. Sometimes we say things we shouldn't, and then we have to correct that. But all that to say is, yes, I take responsibility for that, and yes, I think I have a great staff to do that, and yes, I think we have a great staff in the schools to execute that. But again, I brought it for discussion, as we wanted to just talk through it, and here, I'll try to answer any other questions that I can.
All right. So, thank you for the discussion. Very informative, and I think we have another policy that if there is challenges to instructional materials we have...
Yep.
That that actually goes through a process and comes to the Board. That would basically take care of this if we removed and by the Board of Education. Leave it like it is now.
Yeah, I was, I was just highlighting it because that was what was the concept that you wanted to discuss. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
So, does that mean, Mr. Chairman, that we're not going to bring this back up again? I mean, not forever, but...
I was gonna, I was gonna say that, yes, Dr. Barnett. This the way it is, and then we have the policy that if someone does challenge, he goes through the process and can come to the Board.
Exactly.
Thank you again for that discussion.
Again, to the transparency point, I just want to say this. For example, this morning in Cabinet, we had a conversation about a curriculum that we'll be bringing to you all to look at. It's our Council on Adolescents again. It's an open curriculum. We're gonna be talking about that for an upcoming renewal. We know it's a sensitive topic. We want to make sure you all know what's in there, and we want you all to have the ability to inspect it. So, just so you know, there are sensitive issues that we not only approve ourselves, but before we make the final approval, we also want to get your input as well, because you all represent this community, and we respect that. So, I just want to say that as well.
Appreciate that. And Dr. Stover, I think to your point also, the Board does approve a lot of things already. I mean, tonight we heard, we approved Learning Focus Schools, we approved Student Square, we approved Letterland, we approved several things, our AIG Plan, all of that, that comes before the Board as it is, without having to review every piece of instructional material. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Barnett. Being done with the part of the open agenda, I need a motion to recon close session.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second to go into closed session for personnel matters, current time privilege, and property. Any further discussion? Hearing none, raise of hand for approval. And that's unanimous. Thank you. I'd like to take a fifteen-minute break, and we'll come back into closed session.